Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Forward, bringing forward, again, the plans and specs, again, associated with the 2018 assessment job number one, street pedestrian improvements. Again, this is our federal project. Just as a kind of a recap, just to remind everyone, again, we do have six different proposals with this project. Proposal one is a mill and overlay on Reinhardt Drive from Sixth Street up to Bigland Road. Proposal two is work in the intersection of Bigland and Thirteenth, some pedestrian safety improvements and such over there. Proposal three is basically sidewalk construction on the south side of Thirteenth and Greenway Boulevard from Reinhardt Drive to Bigland Road. And then also associated with proposal three there, we're actually fixing those curb islands in Greenway Boulevard, all those boulevards, so that the roads to the south there kind of line up with the openings. Proposal four is a multi-use trail along the west side of Highway 220 from Twentieth Street Northwest all the way down to Highway two. Proposal five, again, is essentially the curb ramp improvements, getting those up to ADA standards on Seventeenth Street Northwest from River Road to US Highway 220. And then proposal six is just a basically a mill and overlay off the Minnesota side of the Point Bridge there. That's starting to kind of slough there, need to just kind of mill that and fill it in again. So, so that's kind of a summary of the six different proposals. Right now, we're estimating construction around a million eighty-four. If you remember, the city is receiving about eight-hundred-and-sixty thousand in federal sub-target dollars for the project. That is an eighty-twenty split. We do have like sixty-eight thousand in TRLF bond money that we can use for that project. And then, as far as I put in stated allocation slash city, I did look, we currently have in our state aid allocation funds, we have about five-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand. So, we should have enough to pretty much pick up any project costs. I did put city because on Greenway Boulevard, basically Greenway Boulevard and Eleventh, there's a parcel there, and then on what I'm going to call Greenway Boulevard and Fourteenth, on the southeast side of that intersection, there's a parcel of their piece of property there that we're going to need to pick up or acquire some right away to even be able to get the sidewalk in. So, Mr. Gullstead is working with an appraisal company to get that property appraised, and we will have to acquire some property there, very minor amount of property, but, long story short, is I don't believe we can use our federal sub-target dollars to acquire that right away. So, there may be a small amount of cost that the city has to pick up. So, at this current time, the plans have been reviewed, have been approved through our district office in Bemidji. They are being forwarded on to the central office for their review and approval. Once we get that, they also will kind of work with us, communicate with us, to set essentially a bid date. So, one key component, Ron is working hard right now, but we do have to get the right away paperwork completed, in place, before MINDOT will actually authorize us even to proceed with advertising of the project. So, kind of communication with Ron today, we're hoping in the next week and a half or so, hopefully Ron will have that stuff kind of in place.
That's, that's the information that I got from the appraiser.
Yep, yep. So, so again, I guess what I'm looking at doing is kind of file the plans, so that once we do get approval from MINDOT, we can get this project out on the street right away, start advertising it, and we don't kind of get caught in between work session, council meetings and such, and kind of get delayed maybe a couple more weeks of that. So, I'm just going to be looking to, you know, again, file the plans and specs, kind of next week where they're at, and then, once we get our final comments picked up that we may get from central office, we'll just kind of swap those plans out and kind of move ahead with advertising. So, I don't know if anyone's got any questions on that?
You have any questions, Mr. Demers?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Henry, hang on a second.
On, first of all, what's your assumption for contingency? Is it the same across the board, or is it?
Yeah, right now, we figured, pretty much on all of them, I've figured five percent contingencies.
Five percent?
Yep.
Okay. Has that been about what we've been hitting? Or have?
Yeah.
Okay. When you advertise for bids on this, do you anticipate, there's six proposals, I'll back up, there's six proposals here, do you anticipate awarding all of them, or are you trying to, are you going to have like an option on these, or?
We can set it up, so the council will have some options. I would strongly recommend, I mean, if project costs kind of come in where we're currently estimating, I would recommend that we look at awarding all six proposals. The reason I say that is I think we want to be able to maximize the federal dollars. So, again, with being an eighty-twenty split, at eight-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars, I'm estimating approximately one-point-one million dollars in construction that we would need, and right now, I'm at about a million eighty-four. So, so I think we're, you know.
I guess I would recommend not having it optioned.
Yep.
I think it increases the cost and complexity of the, or it increases the complexity and the, it decreases the clarity of the bid, and it will increase the cost. So, I would, I would say if these are the projects we want to do, and we think that this is about what the price is, we should just thumb up or thumb down it. I just, I don't think it would be to our benefit.
The council feels on that, but, again, Mr. Demers, I mean, I'm hoping right now, you know, these numbers, I put together an estimate after we've pretty much got the plans finished, so, I mean, I'm fairly confident that we, we should come in pretty close. And again, if it does come in higher, again, like I said, right now, we do have five-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand in our stated allocation funds too, so we do have additional funds in there that we could use to cut up the additional cost too, so.
Anything else, Mr. Demers?
Are those done, or substantially complete, or?
Substantially complete.
I see.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Please.
And the only thing I'd like to see you do, Steve, is to get a printout as to street addresses, whether it's asphalt or something else, and how much the assessments. And the reason I'm doing it, one of the reasons, is that I had two experiences today. I drove over in Grand Forks, on our suburb across the river, and I'm still having trouble to get rid of my shakes, so, but it's, it's good to let the people know what's going on here, there is a difference. No further comments.
Mr. Emery?
So, just kind of a clarification for, I guess, Henry and the council, when we set the project up, initially, I set it up as an assessment project, because at that time, again, we were looking at doing full reconstruction on Reinhardt Drive, which we would have looked at assessing. If you remember, we decided that, we decided that we were going to do more just a mill and overlay, and then, we decided as a group that we wouldn't assess that, but we were already into it, everything's been set up with the city, with the project numbers and stuff, so we essentially kept it as, it's called out as an assessment project, but there is none of it that's being assessed, so.
Mr. Norris?
Thank you. On the proposal three, what's the purpose west of Eleventh Street, to move the sidewalk closer to the street off of the property line?
We, actually, we maintain, from the back of the curb to the front of the sidewalk is four feet all the way along there. We actually maintain that four foot all the way to Eleventh there. The problem we kind of run into is, as we, Greenway, or no, Thirteenth comes up to Eleventh there, it widens out to kind of transition to the two-way with the center median or whatever.
Right.
So, when that happens, that eighty-foot right away that we have there gets, I mean, we don't have much berm space there left, so we actually have to purchase a little bit of right away to be able even to get that sidewalk in.
Right, but, I mean, it makes sense to have a four-foot offset there, but doesn't, I guess, we have some issues on the north end of town where the sidewalks are too close to the curb and gutter, so, I mean, with, if we have the space, we can put this all the way back to that nineteen-nine, the property line, along the rest of it, and eliminate some of the issues we're going to have with snow removal, because when the blade comes by, he's going to stack all that stuff up, and you're not, and now you're going to have snow, or, so, snow removal issues during the winter. I guess it's, I get what you're doing to tie it in, but to me, if you have the space, and I get, you know, there's some spots where you're not going to be able to have the space, but.
Well, we aren't along from Eleventh.
Right, I get that, I get it, but, but if we can eliminate that issue, because I think Jason can say, we have some issues, and it's where the sidewalk either runs right up to the curb, or is too close to the curb where you're not, you don't have enough room.
That is something that Nancy, Jason, and myself, I think, kind of looked at last fall. The reason we kind of chose four feet is, I mean, typically, I agree with you, Mr. Demers, we'd maybe like to get that sidewalk back closer to the property line. With that kind of being somewhat of an established neighborhood, a lot of people have put in trees and such, and if we put the sidewalk back there, we would have to either tear down, relocate, or whatever, deal with the trees that people have put in on their, on their properties. So, we kind of chose to go at that four feet.
But I get it, but those people shouldn't have put those trees there, because it's not on their property, or it's not on their property.
They shouldn't, but they do.
So, they're not actually, they planted them on city property. And I guess my point is, is then you're bending to the bad actor, and I think we should do what the right thing is, is not, I mean, probably move a tree for a hundred-and-fifty bucks, or I don't know what it's, I shouldn't say that, but, for three-hundred bucks or whatever.
Do we know how many, how many trees are there that we'd have to move if we moved it back?
There's probably a dozen, I would guess, I mean, I'm guessing a little bit right now, Chad, but.
How big?
The houses have only been there a couple years.
Two-inch, maybe, I mean, nothing are very big, probably two-inch trees.
You know, and, because Jason and I have talked about, trying to, or we've talked about, trying to put landscaping in Greenway Boulevard trees, well, you know, Jason talked about removing some trees from the north end and maybe bringing those to the south end, well, if you're already doing some of that, maybe you include that as part of your process.
One thing we kind of thought too, potentially, is, you know, with the trees that have been put in, yes, they're on the city right away, but now, those trees are kind of providing a buffer from the home to the sidewalk, too, they almost kind of give a nice buffer there. So, I guess, right or wrong, that is something that could be modified, changed, even in the field if need be, I mean, it's not going to affect price, but something we could look at if the council wants to go that direction.
Any else, Mr. Demers?
No, keep going, I'm only halfway through it, so.
You know, I, at the risk of running too far afield, like my friend over here sometimes will be occasion to do.
Me?
Not you, my friend Henry.
Oh.
So, we have really done well. When I was here ten years ago, we commissioned through our engineers a pavement study. The pavement study showed the condition of all of our streets, they covered mile by mile every single street. They showed everything from what would be upcoming for a seal coat, what would be upcoming for a mill and overlay, what would be eventually slated for full replacement. So, that's part of it, you know, to have that study as part of it, and then, the next thing you need is you need to have the will to actually carry out that, that plan. Part of it is, you're going to have some assessment to your local residents for some of these projects, and then, this council, I want to guess it was about four or five years ago, began to budget two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a year for miscellaneous street repairs. I, I mean, I can't remember looking at the, it was about four or five years ago, quarter of a million dollars available, mostly of that to cover miscellaneous street repairs. And what are you doing? You're fixing small things before they become big things. You're stopping water penetration into a pavement surface before it pops out and makes a two-foot wide pothole. And so, once again, I wasn't on the council five years ago when it happened, but I, my hats off to all of you that had the foresight to begin budgeting for that. Well, this is a continuation of that, you know, this laundry list of items, you know, it's not flashy, but it really is a continuation of a strategic approach to our pavement and to our other, other transportation elements, in this case pedestrians. And I, I'm proud of the work that the city's done, especially this spring and the way things look, I'm really proud of our community, and to everybody, all of you, every council member, every staff person who's been involved with designing and implementing this, this forward-thinking plan, I appreciate it. So, there.
Okay. Any other questions? Done, sir, thank you so much. We request to file plans and specifications for 2018 city project number one.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, this is, we'll be looking to file plans and specs for your 2018 city project number one, again, which is essentially a mill and overlay of the senior center parking With that project, we are also looking at doing some concrete paving of the alley there that's right adjacent to the senior center property. We're also looking at doing a little bit of storm sewer work over there, so that as the water now that comes off that concrete alley, comes off the parking lot, it's going to enter basically the storm sewer system before it gets to the remaining gravel alley and creates a mud hole there. And then, also, at the north end of the senior center parking lot, I am putting in curb and gutter there, so as the water comes down, hits the curb and gutter and gets out of there, as opposed to hitting that grass line that over time gets built up, and then the water sits and backs up into the parking lot and deteriorates that asphalt surface. So, again, I think a lot of, a lot of good improvements with that project. So, we are estimating approximately about a hundred-and-five thousand in construction, you know, total project of cost of about, you know, roughly a hundred-and-thirty thousand. I did give kind of a breakdown there of the different funds, that the money would be, I guess, kind of taken from to pay for the project. So, again, I don't know if anyone has any questions on the project, got kind of the draft plans here, if anyone wants to look at them, but we would be looking at essentially filing the plans at next week's council meeting, getting authorization to proceed with advertising of the project, and then, setting the bid date for May first at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you, Mr. President.
With the general capital fund, is there a payback schedule for that, or how is that going to be? Typically, when we pull things out of there, it's based on a financing, correct? I mean, we?
I think that was all budgeted for, right? David?
The money has been being put into the capital fund for the, for this, where we're at, the dollar mark right now, I don't know, but we can have that for you at the next one. But, yeah, money has been put away for, been put away for the, the senior center parking lot.
The whole eighty-three, or, you said you aren't sure.
I'm unsure where the total is right now.
Because I remember, we had originally talked about a considerably smaller number, because we were just going to seal coat it, or whatever we were going to do, so, and that was a year ago, so I don't remember putting sixty thousand in last fall, or this year. Was it sixty?
I think it was sixty-nine.
If I could jump in, Carla could speak, obviously, much better than I could do it, but the conversation I had with her this week, wrapped with this, was there's sixty-eight thousand budgeted for the senior center parking lot out of the general capital project fund, and then, there's an extra thirty-four that gets budgeted annually for unforeseen projects or things that come up.
Across the entire city?
Across the entire city, and Carla thought that that thirty-four could make up the extra twenty, part of the extra, if it's seventeen, that's missing from the parking lot portion.
Right.
If you look at the proposed funding, the eighty-three, eight-twelve is the parking lot portion, and the three are the, the other two are the alley portion.
Right. And is that our entire street reconstruction remainder after paying, or that thirty-seven thousand, how much?
How much will be left?
On the construction dollars?
This is for our city reconstruction dollars, so only two-fifty.
Okay, of that two-fifty, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
That's not state, stadium, okay.
Mr. President, I think everyone around the table knows what I'm about to say, but just in case someone's watching, the reason that the project cost went up as much as it did is if we had just done the mill and overlay, or seal coat, or minor repair, it would have broken up again and just been a Band-Aid, because we do have this water collection problem. So, we actually had to go back out and measure grade and create a water drainage plan, and this is all part of that, to make it more of a long-term fix versus coming back in one, two, three years and having to do it all over again.
That's correct, yeah, because when we were looking at it last fall, we were just going to kind of turn the contractor loose with not a whole lot of direction, and, and again, I think we would have just, like you said, we would have had ponding issues and stuff, and that pavement would have just slowly deteriorated again. So, hopefully, we're spending a little more money upfront, but I think long-term is going to be better.
And certainly, of the two projects, this is not even a question of better project, I just want to make sure that we're protecting that, our capital investment, or, you know, capital fund, and make sure, I guess, in my own mind, that I have it straight in how we're paying for it, because, so it sounds like in some part, we will, well, we'll be holding our fingers close that we don't have any additional capital funding requests that have any, any gravity to them, I guess, so, thank you.
So, that concrete is going to start on the back of that parking lot and head south? Is that how that's going to go?
Yeah, it'll start basically at the north, what I'm going to call the north end of the parking lot, and then go south.
Catch drain into that and catch going south.
Yep.
So, we're eliminating all those water problems for all those issues back there?
Yes, the best we can.
Well, you have kind of a reverse drain, kind of like in Francine?
Kind of like an inverted crone.
Yep, nice.
And will all the, the people back there be notified that this is going to be happening in their back alley, due to the fact that they might have spent large amounts of money bringing in fill to fill in there, just so that we don't get charged?
Yeah, I mean, we'll, you know, once we get a bid, we get a contractor on board too, we have kind of a timeframe, you know, we can communicate with those folks, because, you know, we got the one business back there.
Right.
So, we'll have to work with those property owners.
Any other questions for Mr. Emery? I see none.
Oh, I just, one comment, Jason Storoz and his crew did an excellent job.
Does that have to do with?
Big slow.
Let's get through this, then you can make comments. Mr. Emery?
Thank you, sir.
Number three, discussion on wastewater repair in the fourth street northeast. Mr. Storoz?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, doing some of our televising of our gravity mains last year, we found that there was an area along Fourth Street where there's, we'll call it a separation. We were trying to check the good timing, we were going to repair that, it's not an emergency, but water light, we're looking at replacing some water main, very close proximity to where the, where the break is. So, we thought this would be an opportunity to then we do it, and because the watering project will require the road to be shut down, fourth to be shut down for some of the water, so we thought the timing would be good, water might put the project on for kids, including, there was five proposals, number five on the proposal that was the wastewater repair project, water light, I guess the whole bidder was already Zaveral's son, but they won't officially award the bid until the city council, whether or not to approve the wastewater, of course, my project, and that's what's before you here today.
Yeah, I was going to say, the water lights commission essentially made the award proportionally of the award, and then they made this proposal five or whatever, awarded it contingent on council approval.
So, our day was the low bid for the total project, however, on the proposal number five, they were higher than their opposing bid, but it was like that, I guess I would recommend that we go ahead and move forward with approving proposal number five, just due to the location and the timing of the project. We've had that street torque bar before, and I don't think it's a good idea, we either have to shut it down again at some point, I don't think it's a good idea to, like the way we did the previous, it was a MINDOT approved traffic plan, but for safety reasons and stuff like that, I think it would be best to try to do the two projects.
Any other questions for Mr. Storoz?
So, you're recommending we award the bid to Zaveral's even though they weren't the low?
Well, it would be a total project.
Okay.
You'd award it, but you may as well have to.
It makes sense to do that, that, it's legal for us to do that.
Well, essentially, when the bid specifications went out, it was a total project bid, so if you're going to actually award that portion of it, it goes to the total cost, which would be Zaveral's. If you weren't going to award it, you'd have to go out for another bid specification to do it, because it wouldn't be included in that.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? I see none, sir. Report request to hire seasonal employees.
I'm not related to this.
Thank you, just Jason and I kind of.
Is that on?
Oh, I turned it off.
Okay.
Oh, no, this is on, now it's on.
You've been off the whole time.
High is on.
Yeah.
High is on.
Zero is off. Oh, off.
High is on.
Okay, we're on. Jason and I put this in together each year, just an annual request to open up the hiring process for part-time employees for summer activities and summer help.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Sounds good to me.
I'd say, go ahead.
I thought, do you have any else?
That's it. I'm waiting for the big show.
Make sure, make sure you get it all done, get enough.
I was going to say, seven.
You got enough people for, for the pool when it opens?
Last year.
That's funny right there. Making sure we're good on the pool coverage.
We're going to have a lot of flower help again.
Ray? Ray? Okay, anybody have any questions for him on this?
That's indirectly a question on it, Mr. President.
Anybody have any questions on hiring the seasonal employees?
No.
No, okay, thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Pretty good.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Can I do one thing before we go?
No.
Just communication more than anything else. I just heard, one of them actually has to do with the pool, we did have the bid opening today for the pool liner, redo the pool liner, we got two bids, which was good, because we actually had set two sets of plans out, so both of the ones that received plans, bid on it, it came in significantly lower than what the estimate was. So, with that timeline, we are going to be looking forward to see if there's something that we can do to make sure that that gets expedited then, for getting that ready for the liner to be put in. So, that was good news today, so, that's, I think that's, shows that we hope, that we should be hopefully on schedule or even ahead of schedules due to what came in today, so that was, that was good news.
So, are you putting the liner in before we do the other fixes, or how are you?
No, that's why I say with the, with the bid coming in like it did, that gives us a little bit of wiggle room then for the.
We did have the bid openings today for the pool liner, to redo the pool liner. We got two bids, which was good because we actually had set two sets of plans out. So both of the ones that received plans, bid on it, it came in significantly lower than what the estimate was. So with that timeline, we are going to be looking forward to see if there's something that we can do to make sure that that gets expedited then for getting that ready for the liner to be put in. So that was good news today, so that's, I think that shows that we hope, that we should be hopefully on schedule or even ahead of schedules due to what came in today. So that was, that was good news.
So are you putting the liner in before we do the other fixes, or how are you?
No, that's why I say with the, with the bid coming in like it did, that gives us a little bit of wiggle room then for the other part of it to get moving forward and get that maybe even started. Since the spring isn't coming around as fast as possible, that we might have to do some of this, maybe busting through the frost or whatever to get those, to make sure that the support and the pipes and everything are ready to go so that it will support the liner and that we won't have that again. So we'll be talking about that tomorrow, get the price together to see if we do have to go through frost and do it before it gets thawed out completely. We can maybe move forward with that, so.
Okay. Entertaining a motion to adjourn. Move by repo. Mr. Storilow.
I just wanted the council to be aware, we had our smallest payloader, we had any issue with the steering in the center, and brought it in for repair. We had it split, and so the machine is split in two right now. Necessary repairs will probably be in the ballpark of $12,000 to $14,000 for it. We plan on hanging on the loader at least three to five more years, so it's a necessary repair. I mean, we have to do it, but it's above what Mr. Murphy can approve, so I just thought I'd let you know that. We're going to move forward with the repair and wanted to bring it to your attention for, just so everybody's aware.
Yep. Appreciate it. Second. Reapply motion to adjourn, and Pacheco, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion is carried, means adjourned.